This fourth session of the Germantown Municipal School District is now in session. The first item on our agenda is annual review revision of policies, first reading. Oh, I just clicked the wrong way. The first item is... the revision of policy 6.200, attendance, pregnancy, and truancy.
So, I can go ahead and start. So, as you are aware, we had a recommendation from TSBA to change the policy, then we changed it, and then we got a notification to...
To unchange it again.
To unchange it, or at least modify the way that we changed it. So, really, it centers around what counts as an excused absence and what is not. And so, school endorsed activities count as a field trip, so even if the student is not there, they count as being present at the school. So, it's just something that we had to list, so...
They always have. Was it, could we take it out?
It was, they...
We had it phrased differently.
We had it phrased differently.
They were counting it as excused absences, but now they're present codes instead of absent codes.
Because, I mean, they've all been counted.
Yes, so they're counted as present.
Yeah, they've all been counted.
And it's, and I think they were just concerned that we weren't taking it out. We were excusing those activities. So, that was the change that you see there. So, that is added back in as D on the second page, line six. It is a reasonable excuse for them to miss school is a school endorsed activity. It's just not counting as an absence for that student.
Is there an example of what an endorsed activity actually is?
Well, if they're going to participate in a band competition or sports or going to state, they are not counted absent as far as their time for making up exams or what they're doing. So, if they're representing the school on an activity...
What about club, like Model UN?
Yes, same thing.
Okay.
If the students are going to the zoo, they're not counted absent on that day, and it's not counted as an excused absence. They're counted as being present for those activities.
Okay.
Other questions on the policy change?
The second item is Ms. Laney's fiscal year 2019-20 budget amendment number 15. Mr. Jones?
And I'll go ahead and preface it if you want. So, on this change, as you're aware, the board graciously approved those COLA stipends, or the equivalent of a COLA stipend for staff. There were some federal employees that are paid out of federal funds, and so that we don't have to deal with resubmitting a federal budget and then getting approval back for them again. It's the recommendation to pay for them just out of the general fund for those few positions that are paid for out of federal funds. So, this budget amendment just finishes to make sure that everybody receives a COLA stipend there. You can see the FTEs that we're talking about there, 2.87 teacher salaries, there's two sped teacher salaries, 26 education assistant salaries, a supervisor, and then another .3 supervisor that are paid for out of federal funds. So, in order for everyone to receive a COLA stipend without having to go back and resubmit a federal budget, that's the recommendation. Mr. Jones, I don't know if you have anything else?
Questions? Concerns?
I think this is just officially doing what we talked about was gonna have to be done for a handful of...
Yes, for these last, yes, just a handful that were left. Because everybody's looking at them. It's distracting.
Is there any further business?
I will give you some information that I am gonna present in my superintendent's update since we do have some time now. So, first, I know that Ms. Price's department has been working on some calendar options for the board to look at in January, so we are, I am gonna present those for you during my superintendent's report. We do want this time, and we're gonna post them online under the superintendent's report so that community members can look at them, see what they like, teachers can also. We've already got some teacher feedback back on the three options that we have. So, know that people can talk to you about their recommendations, their concerns for those calendar options, but also the community can go in and look and see what's proposed, and a lot of them, you'll see the pros and cons that were listed for each of them and the differences between the days. So, we have a period of time, and you also have that in your documents. The other option, item that I think we would want to discuss is the legislative agenda. We really haven't acted or operated on that. I know that Arlington has already made their agenda. I didn't know if we wanted to take this time as a work session to talk about some of those things. We could add that as a board meeting item, or if y'all wanted to just talk about it and then vote on it in January, but that's really up for y'all to discuss. Do y'all wanna take this time to talk about our legislative?
I think in some of our meetings, there have definitely been some different things that we've talked about that we might remove and a few things we might wanna add, especially some things that come up late in the session this spring. And looking at that, I can start working on, if you have some feedback, if everybody would be willing to email me some of the things that you think that maybe were kinda passed, we can start with that, and then also things that we might wanna look at, definitely adding. We're gonna talk, and I'll mention it in the legislative report, it's not in the actual report, just because it's kind of a save the date for everybody, but we're gonna have our breakfast coming up in January, and that will be prior to our meeting. And so, we'll wanna have some work. We can actually vote on approval if we have some correspondence amongst ourselves between now and then, and do some, like I said, adding and deleting a few things, especially some of the things that Mr. Manuel brought up in our recent meeting with Mr. Vaughn. I think there's a couple of specific things that aren't mentioned that we may wanna reevaluate. And that way, we can at least kinda have something for that date when we're all getting together with our legislators, but then also plan that following week, too.
So, we won't have something that we voted on as a board for breakfast?
Prior to that, right. It'll be like this past year as far as that, but we'll have something to discuss, and we'll have it printed and available, and it'll be basically board pending. But we'll be the ones who came up with it, so I feel confident that that will be approved.
We also have a sample of, we got Arlington's legislative agenda, so we can send that, scan that and send that out to y'all also to see what they are identifying as priorities in our next session.
Like I say, I think we've done a good job identifying a few ourselves, just certain things specific to some concerns that you've expressed and...
What is the date in January?
The 10th.
The 10th. Have we, have we sent out any kind of notification or saved the date as yet?
No, that's going out tomorrow. I'll be glad to bring you up to speed on what I do know, though. I have actually asked a few legislators to save the date, but that is officially the date. Ms. Crowder has had some students working on, well, I will report on that, then we'll go ahead and do that now. We're kinda working on a little bit of a rebranding, if you will, because of maybe a little light attendance in the past, just trying to kind of get back on track and make it so that people understand what the purpose of it is, and hopefully get everybody not only there, but so that it's actually more of a forum where people, us, will be able to have our legislative agendas, but also having those people in attendance that anticipate what's going to, you know, actually be talked about and discussed in advance. That's something that Ms. Crowder and I talked about two weeks ago when we started planning, that it's really important that they understand why we need them there and why they may wanna be there. So, that's really a big deal. That'll be right before they head back that following Tuesday, so we're hopeful that we can get some good attendance. But I'm also planning to have some county commissioners present, and then folks not only from municipal boards, but also from the Shelby County Board, and going on and inviting Mr. Cobbins to hopefully join us from the state board as well.
So, we're gonna include Shelby County's board as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
And it is an election here.
And that's a big factor for a handful of folks, we know.
That's always, yeah.
Does impact attendance.
Okay.
Any further business?
There will actually be breakfast, at the breakfast.
Hey.
I would ask that, I think we brought this up a couple times before, but as we look at the calendar for next year, I would ask that in January, if we could have a board retreat that is focused on budget before the budget season actually starts, since we don't have a strategic plan currently really in place that is in action. That would help us, I think, maybe set some goals towards our new strategic plan, budget goals, kind of like, okay, well, we're wanting to focus on whole child, right? So, this is what, how do we move toward that? What do we recommend? What are some of our focuses as a board to kinda help as Mr. Manuel gets started? And I don't think it needs to be an entire cabinet thing. I think it really just should be the board and Mr. Manuel, just to talk about what we wanna see in the budget. I think sometimes when it comes to us, and it's already been through all the processes, it's hard for us to kinda wrap our head about what changes, if any, usually none, get made. So, I just think that might be helpful.
Input on the front end.
Input on the front end, especially this year since we're still wrestling with strategic plan and those goals.
I think one of the challenges that we'll have with that is, as you know, creating the budget for us is really dependent upon a management piece of that. And so, a lot of the times when we look at how we're going to, what we're gonna prioritize in the budget, and as we make the budget to present to the board, sometimes we're not aware of some of those costs. So, I think there's a good objective to be strategic and look at how we spend the money, but also, too, for us, some of those difficult decisions that we have to make before the board even sees that are driven by costs or are driven by each of the department's needs that they have. So, it's difficult because of the, that's not typical what you see with a lot of school systems, and the superintendent and the boards make, you know, the superintendents and the administrative team make the budget for the board to approve, and I just wanna be careful that we're not taking a step of the board creating a framework budget and then giving us to make the budget.
No, I'm not, I'm trying, I'm thinking bigger picture. And I will say, when I went to the chairmanship training, budget works, not work sessions, budget retreats were not uncommon, and they were discussed by, we discussed it as chairman, that they actually have retreats for, specific to the budget.
Right. So, and it would be... So, it's the timing of it, it's the timing of, when you see a lot of the budget retreats, it's after the administrative team and those people have actually gone through and looked at costs and looked at what we're gonna have to roll up with staff and positions, and so an example would be if we have a lot of people who are stepping off into Step 19 for human resources, that's gonna dramatically change what the budget process looks like. So, you have to, you have to almost have what are gonna be your expenditures before they do that. So, yes, budget retreats are common, but a lot of times when you see that, the staff has already really done a lot of the legwork and investments. We do a budget retreat when we have those work sessions. Now, we can have it more extended prior to that. It's the sequencing that I think is the challenge. Before, we've had a chance to dig in, that'll be hard to really have a budget session.
But I think, again, I'm not trying to get into the nitty gritty with you. I'm, again, looking big picture. If there are, if we do need to adjust later, that's fine. I'm not wanting to get in, you know, and tell you exactly how to spend your money, but I do want you to know where our focus lies. And when we have a strategic plan that's in place, I think that tells you where our focus is. We don't currently have, we were supposed, you know, we're still in the throes of creating a strategic plan. So, because that is not in place, I still think we need to have some type of meeting pre to just kind of discuss, well, you know, if you do have to make decisions, we'd really prefer you stay away from this cut, maybe head toward that, but let us know how that goes.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I guess my confusion is, and I completely agree with you about the strategic plan.
That's, that should be our guiding principle. We don't have that.
But I, I'm not sure that we need to weed into telling them what area to stay away from, or where to make a cut or not make a cut, because that's really their job. It's our job to view it and approve it, correct?
It is our job to approve it, but I think the problem has become, because the last two years, we haven't seen it until April, not late March, early April.
So, my question would be this, is there a compromise that perhaps, because January is quick?
Right.
That maybe, once they have their first draft done, that that would be a better time for us to have a retreat, so we can look at the preliminary of where they're going and what they're thinking, and we can judge that against where we are, what the strategic goals we've done?
Right.
And, and offer our encouragement, offer whatever. But I think what worries me from a budget perspective is you're coming back from the holidays, and then January's quick.
Right. I can, I can do that. I can go there. I just wanna make sure that we're not on the back end of it, and they've put in all this work, and we're looking at it and say, and I've had concerns the past couple of years that really aren't, they, you know, you kinda feel odd because you're already so far into it trying to get these concerns addressed. So, if it's, if it's first draft, if we have some sit-down time, when it's just the board and the superintendent to really discuss it, I'm fine with that.
And I'm fine with that. I mean, that's obviously my compromise suggestion, as long as we understand as a board, it's not our decision to make.
Right, but it is our job to approve.
To approve it.
And, but if we don't approve it, that's a problem. So, again, you don't, do you see what I'm saying? You can't...
I'm just trying to keep us from getting in the weeds and micromanaging the professional staff.
Right.
The challenge I have is, and you lived through this with me, if I look back on start times...
Right.
I would've done it from the start.
Right.
Would've done it from the start. It divided this community, it divided our school board, it was a challenge. And the problem with that was we didn't have good financial numbers because we were being created as a district, and it was a problem, and I still think we haven't healed all the way from that challenge. I don't know until we get our early projections from the BEP numbers that we see from the state. It could be a really bad year where our BEP numbers are going down in comparison to the other municipal districts around us and Shelby County schools, and we may be in a year where we're making cuts to what's happening in the district. So, the conversation that we would have from a board would be dramatically different if we're looking at that type of year. Knowing the pot of money or what we can address and have to spend, I think what I want to do, and in most cases, I think we are really united on what we think is important for our district and those objectives that we wanna cover. I don't wanna live through something like that when we don't have to. If, if we can know some good, are we gonna see a year with increased revenues? Are we gonna see a year with decreased revenues? Are we gonna see a year where HR costs are gonna be dramatically more? All those things, I think, play into some of those strategic plans. So, maybe it's, it's the timing of a January versus, once we get a little closer and get some of those earlier projections.
Again, I'm fine with the later, later. See, I'm just wanting...
Personally, I would like, because last year was my first go around the budget, and so, I felt like I had opportunities to have conversations with people about what our needs were before I knew what our needs were. And so, I would like for us to know a little bit more about, well, we're projecting this this year, or we, we know that we're gonna have a shortfall here, or we do have a lot of teachers who are hitting Step 19, or whatever our challenges are gonna be, for us to be able to communicate that to our funding bodies, I think is really important. And the earlier we can do that, the more effectively we can do that in one-on-one conversations and when people ask us, what are your funding needs?
And I think that's part of that conversation, absolutely.
So, I would like to have sort of a retreat where we hear more about, these are our, our goals, these are our hopes, these are our...
That was my first experience, was we met about the budget, a couple weeks later, we approved the budget, a couple weeks later, we were over there with the funding body talking about what this looks like, and there wasn't much information prior to that. And I don't even mean from expenses of staff and everything, I just mean like even like projects, making sure I understand the priorities, what we've rolled over. I mean, I've seen the list like everybody else in town a million times, but I still wanna know what, we have done some things since we last saw that list that we were able to do ourselves, but I still wanna know constantly rolling, what is, what do those even top five, top 10 look like? So, any moment I can speak to that need.
Well, and beyond capital things.
Right.
Investments and things like that. But I, like I say, I'm not trying to get down into staffing.
Staffing, right.
You know, I think that, I just wanna make sure I understand prior to two weeks before we go, go hear it, that...
And we'll say this again, I think our biggest, yeah, our biggest problem here is...
I just wanna make sure I know what we need.
The, the problem that we have is what's set on us by the city. I'll leave it on.
Okay.
The, the problem we have is the timeline that we're giving the city. In most school systems across the state, they are not beginning the budget process. When we're concluding our budget process, that's when we're starting, because like we've said, the really, the thing that really drives it is when we get that first BEP statement that says, hey, you're up, you're down, what type of year it's gonna be. But the compressed timeline that we get to go through the FAC and all those committees is probably one of those limiting factors for us, so...
So, can we, can we just say that we, we would like to have a budget retreat at a time...
Previous to...
Previous to the final presentation?
Yes.
And then let you set the timeline about when we do it?
Or you and the chairman can discuss, yeah.
Mr. Jones, when typically do we get that first BEP projection?
Of mid-April.
See, that's, that's a problem.
Budget, budget is already there, except if we're, if we're proj, but we'll have a, we still have an idea.
Yeah, but you see another, yeah.
And that's fine. I mean, again, we know that that's, we know that y'all have challenges there, and we, I think all of us are sympathetic to that and feel it. I just want us to have a better understanding before, you know, and to be able to provide some perspective a little bit on the goals we're trying to set. I just think it would be better. More communication is never a bad thing.
We will work on that.
Okay.
Setting the date for that. Any further business?
We're getting close to time, bud.
Yeah.
We stand adjourned. This stated meeting of the Germantown Municipal School Board is now in session. I invite you to take a moment of silence. Thank you. I've invited Ms. Amy Oof to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand?
I am with God, in the municipal, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Has been moved by Ms. Fisher and seconded by Ms. Oof. Is there any discussion? Ms. Subramani, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Solf?
Yes.
Ms. Lutte?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our next item is recognition and awards. Mr. Manuel?
Start with this one. Tonight's student recognitions are GMSD Holiday Card Contest winners. These young artists were chosen from the largest submission pool in the district's history. So, the fact that they were selected and chosen is something truly special. So, for our elementary school winner, tonight we have Ms. Anne Frances Buffington. Her teacher is Reese Koger at Forest Hill Elementary School. So, can we have Anne Frances Buffington come up?
Congratulations. And in just a minute, we're gonna have everybody go out so we can take their pictures in front of the banner, so we're not gonna want pictures yet. So, you can go sit for just a minute.
For our middle school winner, we have Lila Tally, and her teacher's Ms. Hannah Robleski from Houston Middle School. And for our high school winner, Ms. Liliana Buchanan, and her teacher's Bobby Spillman. So, if Ms. Liliana would come on up. The grand prize winner and the first elementary school student to take this honor is Anne Frances Buffington. So, there is a prize to go with being the grand prize winner. So, tonight, we are also recognizing an outstanding community member this evening. Matt Mitchell is a PTO board member and part of the Forest Hill Dads Group. Last month, he organized a charity basketball game at Forest Hill Elementary School. The event raised over $2,000, which was donated to the West Tennessee Veterans Home. This event was inspired by an experience he had as a fifth grader in Memphis. He and his classmates hosted a teacher versus student game, and he still remembers the fun of seeing his principals and teachers playing basketball together. Wanting to host a similar event for the children of Forest Hill, he approached Principal Zach Prokosky, who suggested the event be a charity fundraiser. Ms. Prokosky is passionate about veterans' homes and chose to donate the proceeds to the West Tennessee Veterans Home. The Veterans Home is building a new location in Arlington and was grateful for the donation. Mr. Mitchell organized 40 players that included fifth graders, teachers, Germantown SWAT officers, and retired professional and college players. I had the pleasure of emceeing the event, and it was fun to watch the children, except when the Grizz made me do a free throw and I haven't touched a basketball in 15 years. But luckily, I got two tries at it. Mr. Mitchell also recruited some community members to donate prizes for crowd games like a hot wing eating contest, a three-point shootout, and more. Local mascots, the Grizz, Pouncer, and of course, Flash the Fox, also teamed up to entertain the crowd. Events like the one that these two gentlemen, Ms. Prokosky included, planned is part of what makes Germantown special. So, on behalf of the school board tonight, I wanna thank Ms. Prokosky, and I wanna thank Mr. Mitchell for their work in making such a wonderful event, and Ms. Fisher and I talked about it afterwards. We haven't had that much fun in a long time at a charity fundraiser. It was really special. So, if we could have Ms. Prokosky and Mr. Mitchell come on up, we are thankful for what they did. Thank you so much. It was really fun. So, now, if we could have everybody that we recognized today, we're gonna go out to that Germantown banner and take some pictures real quick, and if we can have all the board
We move to reports. Our first report is the TLN update. Ms. Griffith?
Since our last meeting, Germantown School Board members and Superintendent Manuel have met with Representative Kevin Vaughn. Again, a few primary topics discussed were regarding legislation about the future of ten-ready testing, student discipline, graduation requirements, use of vapor products on school property, and alternative school offerings. In the past month, there have been some exciting stuff out of Nashville, primarily dealing with the State Department of Education and also a few things that the governor's been up to. Commissioner Schwinn recently presented her strategic plan that the state is now referring to as Best for All. She reiterated two existing priorities of focusing on early literacy and promoting the teaching profession, but also added a new priority of educating the whole child. This priority takes into account the social and emotional well-being of students and not just their academic measures. We have heard much discussion on this topic of late, but are not sure what the actual funding looks like yet to support this initiative. Governor Lee announces $25 million vocational education investment through GIVE, which stands for Governor's Investment in Vocational Education Grants. The primary focus of these grants, which have been awarded since June, is on the developing workforces, is on developing workforces in rural communities throughout the state by strengthening technical education offerings statewide. Oh, and page two. When asked recently by legislators, Education Commissioner Schwinn stated that she believed that the funds received by families for ESAs would be applicable to federal income tax. This prompted Shelby County Senator Akbari to request a delay in the rollout of ESAs until eligible families were made aware of that, of the tax ramifications associated with them. Governor Lee then promptly issued a statement clarifying that ESAs, like scholarships, are excluded from federal tax implications. Governor Lee recently signed his 10th executive order since taking office. This order moves Development Services for Young Children with Disabilities, what we refer to as TEIS, out of the State Department of Education, and they will now be housed within the Department of Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities. We're also meeting this week with Representative Dwayne Thompson, and we're looking forward to talking to him about the upcoming legislative season.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. The chairman's report this evening is, first of all, to thank Ms. Amy Oof, who was served as chairman, who is the vice chair, at the last GMSD board meeting. The chairman, myself, has had some health concerns and issues, and so I really appreciate you stepping in into that space. As well, the board attended the TSBA conference and has been busy with things like spelling bee judging and attending different holiday programs as they begin. I really do encourage the community to make plans to be at as many of the holiday programs of the GMSD schools as you are able to attend. They are always wonderful. I got to hear the band today, and their concert is tomorrow night, and it is wonderful as well, and it will be at GPAC. So I encourage you to take part in the celebration of the season and really enjoy our children and how incredibly talented they are. Also, want to lift up that the Germantown Christmas Parade is this Saturday, December the 14th, and encourage you to attend. Today, we had a very special day as a board. We went to the high school, to Houston High, and got to hear the band play, but more importantly, broke ground on the next phase of the athletic and arts initiative that we are engaged in at Houston High School, and broke ground on the band room, and then also had a tour of the fieldhouse. And so all of that is coming along incredibly well. Thank you, Mr. Kathy, for overseeing that. And thanks to all of those who have been involved, those who have given, those who have fundraised, and those who are passionate about sports and fine arts in our community. The next report, if I can get this to work, is the financial report. Mr. Jones?
Hey, you have your financial reports for the month ending November 30, 2019. In the school operating or general purpose fund, our total assets, liabilities, and fund balance are at $15.5 million. In the federal projects fund, there's a receivable reimbursement due from the Tennessee Department of Education for $215,000. Total assets, liabilities, and fund balance and the remaining funds are, in the cafeteria fund, $241,000. Capital projects, $3,047,000. Health insurance fund, $2,120,000. The OPEB trust at $2.8 million. And in the general fixed asset account group, which includes our land, buildings, and construction in progress, is right at $107 million. Just a few comments on the statement of revenues and expenditures. In the school operating fund, the target percentages for expenditures were for administrative and support categories, 42%. Instructional categories, 34%. Overall, our total spending is at 33% of our total budgeted. In the health insurance fund, November claims total $212,000 under our monthly budget of $375,000. Also wanted to mention that we had a quarterly reimbursement for pharmacy at $52,000. So our new pharmacy program is working well. It's $35,000, or up $35,000 compared to last year. Under capital projects, the construction costs for the Houston High School Field House project are now being reported. Funds are received from the HHS Athletics and Arts Foundation, and then we pay the contractor. In the cafeteria fund, Aramark reports a net income of $40,000 year-to-date. And finally, in the OPEB trust, $40,000 net realized gain, unrealized loss on investments was reported for the month. And $79,000 in retiree medical claims are reported, and this was a reimbursement back to the health insurance fund. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Now we come to the superintendent's report. Mr. Manuel?
And we have a presentation, as always, to go along with this. So if you can turn your attention to the screens. One of the things that I really took pride in, although it's something that's also tragic with the state of our country right now, was our school board attended a TSBA event. And a lot of the themes revolved around school safety and school shootings and the frequency and what our districts are doing to prepare for those events. It was disheartening, but at the same time, I was proud of the work that we have done in our district, and Mr. Bland, and Mr. Crump, and the whole Student Services team have done to really prepare for those events. Now, we are never going to stop. And this is something that we always have to stay on the cutting edge of technology, of prevention, of programs to really protect our students and protect our staff. But for us, a lot of the things that they were recommending, and I think I was telling board members during the presentations, "Oh, we do that. Oh, we do that." That's what we've done, and so that's why I take pride. So I think it's important also for our community to be aware of all the things that we have done to be proactive in case we do have a tragic event in our district. And so now you can find that on our website. So Ms. Crowder and our communications have been working with all of our departments to really gather this information so that the community can see it, stakeholders can see it. So if you go to our website and you can look under the Student Services Department, there will be a new icon around safety, and this is something that we hope to update every single year so that you can see the new initiatives, the new programs, and parents can be aware of all the steps that we're taking. So I'm just going to do some pullouts of a few of these. The board members in the community have a more detailed description of these in this packet, so make sure that you look through them. It's organized in three major categories. The first is annual trainings, and we're going to highlight just a couple of those. And so these are trainings that we do every single year with staff and students. We're going to look at programs and products that we have in place and new things that are rolling out for the community to be aware of. And then we're going to look at our facilities. What are those upgrades that we've done to facilities to make us more secure, more safe in our school district? So with the annual staff trainings, know that we do have a long list, and some of these are required by state statute of trainings that we do, but know that we do have AEDs in all of our schools, and we do a lot of work around training individuals to be prepared in case someone does go into cardiac arrest. But I think one of the things that was special that we saw was really a concern. And I never thought about this until I saw a presentation from the Germantown Police Department SWAT team. Most people who die in these incidents are dying because of blood loss. Because when the police come on site, their job is to secure the premises, not to provide first aid. And so there's an extended period of time where someone may be injured or bleeding or have an issue. And you also know the presentation that we saw, where individuals have a bullet wound to the arm or leg and they're bleeding, and they die because no one was able to provide that first aid. Well, Mr. Bland actually found a good resource force a while back, even before we saw that presentation, so that we do have tourniquet kits in all of our school safety bags. And part of our training this year is going to be to make sure that those teachers are trained with the devices, with the tourniquet kits that they have, so that if there is a shooting, they can actually provide that first aid. And we'll talk about the training that they get with that, too. Also, the partnership that we have with the Germantown Police Department, the Germantown Fire Department, is special. Know that we bring in Lieutenant, or Captain Godwin, every year so that he can train us. He's a member of the SWAT team and talk about what would happen in the event of an active shooter. They do use a protocol program that they have that is a state initiative to really prepare our staff for what would happen in that event, and so you can see it there. Avoid, deny, and defend is really the strategy that they use for our staff about how to prepare for that incident. And they also look at facilities, and Officer Crump is working with our staff to really identify those safe locations in schools. So know that that is an annual training, and I think Houston High School had theirs today, where they had those members there to work with them at the school. Then other things that we have, we've had in place for an extended period of time, but we're just making sure that we're adding components to them. So I think a lot of parents are really familiar with our visitor management system. So how we use the cameras to really buzz individuals in so that we have secured entrances to buzz them into schools. And then if they're going to come onto the campus and interact with students, know that they're, we have been pushing them through the Raptor system, which really runs their name through databases to see if they have anything on there that would prevent them from coming onto our campus. But the Raptor system and technologies do a lot more than just that visitor management system. We've actually added this past year a whole emergency management suite so that if there is an event in the school, it will help us through the process and also help us with reunification so that when we have parents and individuals coming to pick up their children from these events, we've heard in some of the areas it was midnight before parents and children could be reunited. We want to make sure that we have a process in place that really streamlines that. So we're going to see something really quick on the Raptor systems that we have added to our system.
Raptor Technologies Emergency Management System combines proven practices and protocols with 21st century technology to help your district better prepare for, respond to, and recover from an emergency. The Raptor Emergency Management System has three main components: drill management, active incident management, and parent-student reunification. With Raptor, districts can quickly create and publish a set of drill requirements to all schools. Once drill requirements are sent out, reminders for upcoming drills are sent to each school. Noncompliance alerts and monthly summaries go out at the district level. Drills can be initiated from faculty members' mobile phones or desktop, and the data from these drills is immediately and automatically recorded in your district dashboard, giving you real-time drill compliance data by school. In the event of an actual emergency, alerts are sent out instantly to designated school and district personnel, as well as local law enforcement, and any other first responders you choose. Through the app, staff members can access class rosters and account for both themselves and their students in real time, giving incident commanders real-time visibility into the incident. Police and first responders can instantly access building maps, and staff can access emergency plans right from their mobile devices. After the incident, parent-student reunification will be four times faster with Raptor Emergency Management than with paper and pencil methods. And you'll be able to ensure you're releasing students to authorized guardians and have a complete record of the current status and prior movement of every student from the moment of incident initiation through reunification. All approved guardians will receive a text message confirming that their student has been reunified, so there's never any confusion among guardians of who retrieved the student and when. The Raptor app is 100% aligned with the standard response protocol and the standard reunification method and can be configured to any protocol you use. Raptor's implementation and support teams will walk you step by step through the entire emergency response process and ensure you and your staff feel confident. Visit us online at raptortech.com to schedule a demo.
So we have implemented this suite in all of our schools. We actually practiced it at the end of last school year with the district office staff and school staff about how would a reunification occur, and we actually had staff come from the Raptor company to help us practice this process, but it's something that we will continue every single year. So not only are we doing prevention and trying to be proactive if an incident happens, but we're prepared of how do we respond once it does. Then also, we're proud that we're being creative. You can put all kinds of security in place. You can upgrade your facilities, but culture is important. And it's a good and bad thing that we have very polite staff and students at all of our schools, and someone's knocking on a door and waving them over to open the door for them. That eliminates all security that you've put in place. So for us, our Student Services Department and Mr. Crump, it's hard for me to call him Mr. Crump because he was one of our officers for so long, has really worked on a new initiative that they're rolling out here in January. It's called CLASS. It's time for Forget Polite and Shut It Tight. So they're going to work with educating our staff and students that if someone is knocking at a door, someone's trying to get entry, to not let individuals in. And once we've trained individuals on that, we're going to go out and test it and have individuals come in and try to gain entry into our schools. So we're trying to change the culture piece along with changing the facilities at all of our schools. Other new initiatives that we have, we tried it out this semester. We're working with InterQuest Canines. We actually had them come out to the high school and work with us and give us a demonstration. But we have actually signed on with them that they can come, and they're going to do regular visits to our schools. And the dogs are non-aggressive dogs, but they can smell drugs, prescription pills, alcohol, and. alcohol, and firearms. So for us, not only do we want to catch individuals with these items at the school, but we want it to be preventative, so that the students are going to know, we want them to know that this is going to be a regular occurrence. If you have access to these things, don't bring them to school because we're going to find them. So that's one of those culture pieces, and also a program that we are excited to bring to our schools. And then last but not least, we've presented on this before in the past, the fact that we now have 479 cameras in our district, and that we have upgraded or in the process of upgrading our network video recorder, so we have 30 days of archives. But I think more important is the relationship that we have with GPD, that the dispatch there actually has access to our phones. All the SROs, all the administrators in the school can pull up all the cameras on their phones. So if there was an incident in the school, the dispatch could tell them where something is happening live, because they have eyes on the ground, they can see it happening in the schools. So that's something that we're always going to continue to maintain and upgrade and make sure we have a system that supports it. And with that, that moves to the next phase, so we're going to move out of safety, and we're going to move into what I talked about during our work session. Ms. Price and her team have been doing a lot of work around getting our calendars ready, and I know that they're planning on presenting in January to the board three options for calendars. You have those in your packets. I'll look at them briefly in just a second. But also, once we get these approved, we're going to turn around, and then in January, re-engage the committee so that we can go ahead and do the next years, so that we will have it well in advance for the community, so they can schedule those days off from work or make plans for trips. So we're going to have a quick turnaround on the next calendar, too. But know that they have had the committee meeting, and it had one teacher from each school, one administrator, one representative from each department, the GMC PTO representative, and one high school student representative. They came up with three options for the board to consider, as I said. And then I'll talk about a couple of those. Now, for all of them, there are some commonalities among each of the calendars. So first, as you know, it's a state law that Election Day, students must be out of school. This may be something that we need your assistance with. We may need to talk to our election officials here in the city. I believe now that we are the only municipality that has election sites at their schools. That would be something for us that would help us, give us more flexibility in our calendar, if they could move those election sites to other schools. So that we may need your assistance to talk to other elected officials to make sure that that would be something that we would prefer to not have, to take that day off. But the fall and break, and fall and spring breaks align with our neighboring school districts. There's a full week of Thanksgiving on all the plans, and it does satisfy the state requirements when you look at all three of the options, but I'll highlight some of the distant differences. The first option, we call the early start option. It begins two days earlier. It's in the midweek, so it actually starts on a Thursday and Friday, so teachers could actually meet with students, talk about rules, procedures, then the students would have a weekend away, and then they would come back and be ready for full instruction. The students talked about this being something special for them because it eases them back into the school year instead of having a full first week. It also has, we have a kindergarten plan established and a high school schedule pickup plan associated with this calendar also, so the schools have talked about what if, how would they prepare for that? And like I said, the students talked about the desire to ease back into the semesters, and it allows flexibility for additional breaks. We did have multiple discussions around Veterans Day, and this has been a challenge for us, and there are two sides to this coin. Some of the schools really want us to be in session on Veterans Day because it allows them to have a really meaningful presentation at their school and to honor our veterans. And then there are other schools of thought that say that we should really honor all veterans by not being on that day. So with the Veterans Day discussion, know that Election Day and Veterans Day would create back-to-back instructional interruptions midweek, so that was a challenge with that one calendar. And schools have to have elaborate programs or lose an instructional day. So districts without polling sites would be allowed to be in session on Election Day, so that's one of our challenges on Veterans Day. So here's the options. There's the Good Friday, option A. School begins on Thursday, August 6th. Students begin second semester January 5th. Veterans Day and President Day, students are out and staff are in, and then Monday after Good Friday, students and staff are out. If you look at the calendar to the right, and also the image that you have there, we tried to highlight the differences between the calendars. That's what the red blocks indicate, is that would be a line item that's different from calendar to calendar. So if it's highlighted in red, know that it's a different, on the different calendars. Option B is called the Veterans Day Off Plan. Once again, school begins on Thursday, August 6th. Students begin second semester on January 5th. Veterans Day, students and staff are out. President's Day, students are out and staff are in, and the Monday after Good Friday, students and staff are in. And then the third option, President's Day Off, option C. Notice this one, school begins on Monday, August 10th. Students begin second semester on January 4th. Veterans Day, students and staff are in. President's Day, students and staff are out, and Monday after Good Friday, students and staff are in. So you can see, once again, the difference is highlighted in red. We also provided for each board member, and this is also online, so the community can see this also and give us feedback on the different calendar options. Know that there's one that shows the days of the week that's a different printout, so it's the longer one that you have, that landscape paper, too, if you want to see the actual days that students are in, staff are at, just a different way to look at it. All calendar options include a date range for schools to schedule their parent-teacher conferences. We're trying to make sure, if at all possible, we have as little conflict between schools so parents aren't having to juggle going from one school to the other. So know that also, there's flexibility in scheduling the half-day required administration day each semester for teachers, of when they're going to have those curriculum nights or administrative times at the schools. So what's next? We're hoping the board will vote on this at our January meeting, and stakeholders, like I said, have until then to provide feedback. They can email the board members, they can email the administration here at the central office, and the calendar committee will reconvene, like I said, in January to do the next year's instructional calendar. I know that was a lot, but we're hoping that we have a whole month now to look at these, dig into them, talk about the pros and cons of each of the calendar options. We may make some changes depending on the board's desire, so just let us know. With that, that concludes my superintendent's report on safety and calendar options. Ms. Price, you have one thing to add?
I just want to make a mistake, and that is both Veterans Day and the President's Day calendars, both would start on the 10th, and that's because of the amount of instructional days. The only calendar that would start on the 6th was, is that early start or the Monday after Easter calendar?
Right.
We just...
So we have an early start calendar, we have a veterans calendar, we have a President's Day calendar. The veterans and presidents both start on the 10th, the early one is on the 6th. And we will update that before we post it.
Thank you, Mr. Manuel. And thank you, Ms. Price, for you and your team working on getting us a calendar and for next year's calendar early. That'd be wonderful. The next item in our agenda is citizens to be heard. If you would like to be heard, there is a form to fill out and to turn in to the board's secretary. If you have not done so, now is the time to stand up and go and get one of those forms.
I do not have any.
You do not have any. So we do not have any citizens to be heard this evening, is that correct? Okay, then we'll move to the next item in our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the last meeting. I'm sorry, that's consent agenda. I can read, I just have to get it to scroll to the right place. The consent agenda tonight includes the approval of the minutes, the annual review revision of policies, second reading, the annual review revision of policies, first reading, miscellaneous fiscal year 2019-20 budget amendment number 15. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve all items on the consent agenda.
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Landers and seconded by Ms. Fisher. Is there any discussion? Ms. Subramani, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Charmin Luter?
Yes.
Thank you.
The first of our board action items this evening is election of a chairman for the 2020 year for GMSD school board.
I move to nominate and elect Ms. Luter as the chairman of the Germantown Board of Education.
Second.
Is there any, it's been moved by Ms. Fisher that Ms. Luter be the 2020 chairperson of the GMSD school board and seconded by Ms. Oof. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Subramani, would you call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Charmin Luter?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item is the election of the vice chairman. As chair of the board, I would like to nominate Ms. Oof.
Second.
It has been, the motion has been made by the chairman and seconded by Ms. Griffith. Is there any discussion? Ms. Subramani, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Charmin Luter?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item is election of Tennessee Legislative Network representative.
I move to elect Angela Griffith as the Tennessee Legislative Network representative for the Germantown Board of Education.
Second.
Ms. Griffith has been nominated by Ms. Oof and seconded by Ms. Landers to serve as the Tennessee Legislative Network representative. Is there any discussion? Subramani, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Charmin Luter?
Yes.
Thank you.
That concludes the board action items for this evening. Announcements this evening, again, the Germantown Christmas Parade is this Saturday, December the 14th, I believe, at 2:00 p.m. Also encourage you to attend the holiday programs of GMSD schools, and our next board meeting will be January the 13th, a Monday night at 6:30 here at the central office. And we do want to let the community know that we will be discussing the cell phone tower on our property at Dogwood Elementary that evening. That concludes our announcements, and we stand adjourned.